All right. The regular session meeting of Warren County Commission is now in session. The Honorable Jimmy Haley is presiding. Please, folks, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off, put it on vibration. Please keep moving and noise to a minimum. Please remain standing for a word of prayer and a praise to the flag.
If you just please be seated for a few minutes. I'm going to call this regular session meeting of the Warren County Commission for September 17th, 2018, to order. I prepared a little something since it's our first meeting, and then we'll do our invocation, and we'll do our pledge as normal with the roll call vote. First thing, I want to welcome each and every one of you. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome each and every one of you as citizens and members of this commission to our first scheduled meeting of this newly-elected body. It is Constitution Day, and what better way to celebrate than to assemble together as a government entity to carry out the duties and responsibilities to our nation's body of law? The process of choosing leaders is a big part of the American democratic principles that serve our nation, and serving the needs of our citizens is paramount to fulfilling the obligations as of Warren County Commission. The election is over. Our constituents overwhelmingly voted for change and progress, and that we will work together in order to give that to them. Each of us was chosen by our fellow citizens to sit in the seats that we are in here tonight and to make difficult decisions that will come before us for the next four years. This is not a responsibility we should take lightly, nor that we should shrink away from at all. It is truly an honor for me to lead this community, as it should be for each and every one of you. To do that, we must put behind our political rhetoric of the campaign and join together in our endeavor to change the way that business has been done in Warren County. That's what our citizens suspect of us, and our proven leadership does matter. So, why are we here, and what is our purpose? Simply put, we're here to improve the lives of Warren Countyans and provide hope for the next generation, not to pursue personal agendas. We're given four years to make a difference in the lives of people, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to roll up our sleeves, we're going to focus on teamwork, we're going to create a plan of action, and get to the business of changing lives. We must be forward-thinking, not backward-thinking in our approach, and we must spend our time making things happen, not contributing to a problem, because it's all about choices. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King said, "If you can't fly, then run; if you can't run, then walk; if you can't walk, then crawl." But whatever you do, you must keep moving forward, and that's going to be our plan. The priorities of my administration will be to improve our school system's infrastructure and programs for childhood literacy, to reform our broken criminal justice system, to address the problems in our budget, to rethink the way that we compensate county employees, and recruit new and exciting tourism and economic development opportunities for our citizens, and to tackle the alarming high poverty rate, and to do this all while being good stewards of our taxpayers' investments and our community. None of this is going to be easy. There will be countless tough decisions and votes that will have to be made, but I know you're all up for the challenge or you would not be here. When we work together as a team, I believe there's nothing that we cannot accomplish. Moreover, government is not always a solution to every problem. Numerous folks have come up to me over the past month and asked how they too can help implement this new vision. So, I'm going to be appointing multiple task forces on critical issues that will allow our citizens to take a vested interest, a vested stake in changing the community who were not previously involved in government or decision-making, in order to help change the lives of Warren Countyans. Well, what we do in this room is important to our success as a community. We cannot fix everything, nor should we. That is where the private sector and others fill the gap to help move us forward. I'm excited to see what these individuals who have agreed to serve can accomplish while working as a team and formulating new partnerships. To accomplish this administration's priorities, I will also begin calling regular cabinet-level meetings of elected officials. At these conferences, we will evaluate the needs of each department, keep a watchful eye on spending, and determine how each department can contribute to improving the lives of Warren Countyans. Having spoken to every elected cabinet official, I'm abundantly confident that we're going to be able to work together and do great things. Tonight, you're going to be asked to vote on my committee assignments. I am not unaware that there is some anxiety about my decisions. However, our committees are a crucial artery through which the business of our county is conducted. With that in mind, I've evaluated the strengths of each commissioner to determine where I believe that could best be utilized. Committees do recommendations. The full commission votes up or down on those decisions. It's important for me that each committee does its business efficiently and effectively while keeping our mission in mind, that we're here to improve the lives of our residents. I appreciate those commissioners said early on that they would serve on any committee that they were placed on, and they would do their best to help the county. I commend that positive attitude and that teamwork approach. Remember, there are many other committees and task forces where you will be asked to serve as a member of this commission. You have a list of some of those in your packets today or on your desk in front of you. So, let us begin. We're not going to accomplish everything in the first day or the first month, but we have to begin to move forward and plan out strategies that work. It does not matter how we got to this point or what created the problems or challenges we face. What matters is that we can all be a part of the solution. I know that each one of you is invested in the future of Warren County, or else you would not be sitting here tonight as an assembly of elected officials. I am confident that with us working together as one team and moving forward with one common goal, that we can achieve what our citizens sent us here to do. This commission can inspire hope that we need in these crucial times that face our nation, our state, and our community. As I've often said, we're not just 24 commissioners, 12 districts, and four incorporated cities within this county. We must remember that we are one people, we are one community with one vision. We all believe in Warren County. So, let's get to work, get to the order of business done tonight while remembering Constitution Day, its meaning to the American political process of governing. So onward, stronger, together. We'll rise with the invocation now. We have Pastor Tommy Van for First United Methodist Church to give our invocation for tonight.
Thank you, County Executive Haley. Thank you for that introduction, and thank you for addressing this body. And also to this body, I'm happy to stand here as a person who is a new Warren Countyan for two years, and I'm proud to be a part of this city. Let us go to God in prayer. Dear God, we're thankful for this great nation in which we reside. We're thankful that you have smiled in this country for well over 200 years. We're thankful that our forefathers saw that we could come from many places, many directions, yet become one people, all Americans. We know in 1795, on our coin edge, "E Pluribus Unum" was put, and has been since that day. That means of many, one. That's much like this county. We come from many directions, many incorporations, and many little areas that we've all called home for many years, and some of us get to call home now in the recent history. We also know that on our bills and coins is another great phrase in which I put my whole faith as a pastor of the gospel. "In God we trust." Yes, we are many people, but yet we're one Warren County. When we put our faith in God, it's easier to be one people. When we put our faith in each other and start doubting our abilities, then we become separate and no longer one, and it shows that we have no trust in God. My prayer, I think the prayer of every Warren Countyan, is that we would be one, that we would be a good neighbor in order to have a good neighbor. I pray that you would move the conscience of every person on this commission to seek your will, and not only seek it, but to have the courage to do it, to be one, to be from many places, yet one. One not meaning uniformity, so we all look alike, but so that our diversity makes a beautiful tapestry of fabric, just like the colors of Ben Loman that's going to change soon, and we see all the orange, and red, and green, and brown, so we can all be one, yet retain our areas. "In God we trust." I pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, it be so for us tonight in this new beginning, and from this point forevermore, so that we can be an emblem for the state of Tennessee and this nation of what a county can really do. This is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you'll remain standing for the pledge and salute.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Clerk, will you do roll call?
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlau.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Deborah Evans.
Here.
Steve Flynn.
Here.
Richard Grissom.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Here.
Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Lori Jenkins.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Christie Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Spartman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stow.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Lane Wiltshire.
Here.
Next item of business is adoption of a docket. Is there a motion to accept the docket as presented?
Motion to accept the docket.
We have a motion from Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Hennessy. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item of business is reading the minutes. The minutes were not in your original packet, but they have been included on your desk today for your review. We have new, many, many new county commissioners tonight, and so these are the previous minutes from the previous session of the county commission. And so, it would be great to have a motion from one of the previous members to approve those minutes, and a second from a previous commission. We have a motion from Mr. Bolden, dispense with reading as presented, and approve as presented, and a second from Mr. Lee. Any further discussion? Anybody want to make corrections or speak to the motion? All in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Public comments. No one asked to speak tonight as a public comment, so we're going to move on to elected officials' departmental reports. First report is finance. Mr. Cotton.
You have my report. I'll take any questions. It's already at this time.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
When I was looking back over this again, something that I want to know that would be possible for you to change this format and add comparison columns of whatever the month is, such as July 2017, so we would know where we were this July compared to last July, and the year-to-date totals for 2017.
So, you would like the previous year's year-to-date and year total?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that way, we could compare those and just be better prepared on what's going on with the budget this year. Would that be possible?
Yes. That'd be a fairly easy fix.
Okay.
If we could have a motion to approve and a second so we could have any further discussion. We have a motion for Mr. Stotts to approve. We have a second for Mr. Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak now to the motion? So, Ms. Brown has made a concern to ask Mr. Cotton, who's our newly-elected, newly-selected finance director, to give additional information to the commission and his reports. Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Have any questions? Mr. Cotton's report. All in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed? Next report is Admiral Extension Office. I want a chair recognizes, Hilda Lidle, if you want to come to the podium.
Thank you, Executive Haley. Ladies and gentlemen of the county commission, you should have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
We have a motion from Mr. Ruble to adopt. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Spartman. Anybody want to speak to the motion, have any questions? Ms. Lidle, her report. All in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next is airport. Chair recognizes, Richard Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, county commissioners. You should have a copy of my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Is there a motion to adopt? We have a motion for Mr. Carl E. Bolden. Is there a second for Mr. Lee? Anybody want to speak to the motion or have any questions, Mr. Crawford, in his report? All in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Cousin Environmental, Richard Thompson. Recognize him.
Could you be Administrator Ellie, and members of the court, you have a copy of my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
We have a motion to adopt. We have a motion for Mr. Spartman, a second from Mr. Savage. Anybody want to speak to the motion, have any questions? Mr. Spartman?
Yes, sir. I think I've talked to you about three different times on the hobby shop on Long Street.
Yes, sir.
Have we accomplished anything on that?
He's moved the vehicles, he's mowed out there. There's still some materials and stuff on the outside of the buildings that he needs to get taken care of before I can close out that account. I talked to the actual property owner, not the renter, and basically he said that his rent was coming due and that he would have him clean it up or have him move it.
I talked to the last county executive, and he said they was going to move out. Is that so or not so?
I hadn't heard that.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion, have questions? All in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. EMA report. Chair recognizes, Mr. Jim Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
We have a motion to adopt. We have a motion from Mr. South. We have a second from Mr. Bell. Anybody want to speak to the motion, have any questions? Mr. Cunningham. All in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. EMS. Chair recognizes, Preston Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen in court. You've got a copy of her report. Any questions, and I'll be happy to try to answer them.
We have a motion from Mr. England to adopt, and a second from Mr. Lee. Anybody want to speak to the motion or have any questions? All in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Industrial Development Board. Chair recognizes, Don Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We have a copy of my report, and I'll try to answer any questions that I can.
We have a motion for Mr. Prater. Is there a second from Mr. Stotts? Anybody want to speak to the motion, have any questions? Mr. Alexander, at Industrial Development. Mr. Spartman?
When the hotel, shall we get started on that?
Yes, sir. The gentleman came in, the owner came in last Thursday, and indicated that he plans on closing on the property itself by the end of this month, September. He's already in the process of applying for state permits, which indicates that the state office is behind, so it will take some time for it to process through. I don't anticipate it in the next couple of months, possibly the earliest, by any stretch, would be December. More than likely, I would think it would probably be right after the winter thaw, if you will, and that first part of the spring is what we anticipate this part of it.
Mr. Alexander, would you like to tell them when the regular IDB meetings are, because they're open meetings, and any member of the commission is always welcome to attend?
Sure, be happy to. They're on the third Thursday of every month at 1:15 in the Industrial Development Board conference room, which is on the second floor of the Chamber and Industrial Development Board meeting area.
Someone else have a question? Chair recognizes, Mr. Hilton.
How big is this hotel we're talking about? How big is it?
Seventy-four rooms.
Anyone else got any questions? All in favor of adoption, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is committee reports, and since this is a new standing commission with newly-elected folks, we don't have chairman of committees at this time. Are there any of these committees that wish to give a report at this time that would include budget and finance, building and grounds, economic and agricultural development, education, financial management, health and welfare, highway and bridge, policy and personnel, or safety? Are there any reports that need to be made? Chair recognizes, Mr. Bolden.
Mr. Chairman, as of today, our maintenance man said all the county buildings was doing pretty good at this time, but I would like for, after this commission meeting, the building and grounds committee that has been appointed, I'd like to meet with you up here just for about five minutes after the meeting tonight, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other previous reports to come before? Mr. Savage, recognize you.
Depending on approval of the committees tonight, policy and personnel will be scheduled on a meeting either the last of the week or early next week, as time permits. Thank you.
Thank you. As committees start to be formed and put together with chair, there's a handout on your desk tonight about the committees and the upcoming other committees that have to be appointed in the next few days or a few weeks or by our next commission. There's a long list of September appointments that must be made to various and assorted other boards and commissions that many of you will be asked to serve on, but many of these come out of committees in order for recommendations. I can give recommendations, the committee can give recommendations, but it's brought before the board for our approval each and every one of those unless it's specifically earmarked at the county executive, which are several of those. And so, Chair recognizes, Mr. Wiltshire.
Mr. Chairman, depending on what happens with the committee appointments, everyone that is on health and welfare, we would need to meet just for a short, a few minutes right after the meeting to plan a meeting for next week to get in the process of hiring our part-time person.
So, there will be quite a bit of business to do in the committees are formed. We can't do any business or recommendations to the board, and so you'll see on that handout that I gave you that the order of business that each committee should have, and so we'll discuss that when that first item of business comes up. Any further reports to be given at this time? We've also got County Corrections Partnership Committee and Redistricting Committee, and that's a carryover from the old commission as well. Any member of that board wish to give a report at this time? We'll move on to our special presentation tonight. As you know, our county faces many challenges. It's made headlines. We're not in any worse condition or situation than a lot of other counties surrounding us are across the nation. You know, criminal justice has got to have reform. The state of Tennessee is looking at many, many opportunities to move things to the legislature, and perhaps with the new governor and a new legislature, there'll be some of these items that are addressed from a state level and perhaps even a national level. So, it makes it easier on our task to provide safety for our citizens, because that's one of our requirements. And so, you've seen the headlines, we've seen various reports. The current jail that we have right now has challenges in itself, adding on to a jail that's not going to correct the situation at hand. And so, as an educator and as a teacher, and I want to do presentations at every board meeting that we have for the next few months in order to educate each and one of our commissioners about the challenges that are ahead, and to give you information so that you can vote on items. In committees, oftentimes, other commissioners either don't know what the agendas are or don't attend, and oftentimes, they don't have the information available to make a vote on something as crucial and critical as a jail, or school expansions, or the budget, or any other things that face us as a community. And so, in going to CSE task training, which several of you were there, somebody had availability to talk to Mr. Bass and Mr. Hart, who are here tonight in order to give a presentation about the jail and to enlighten the new commission members about the conditions that exist in the jail we have today. We also have Alan Hill, who's the architect for the jail expansion, who has brought some information to share with us tonight. And so, this will be an informal presentation that will be presented with a slideshow, and members of the commission will be able to ask questions and to see what kind of challenges that we do have in the jail and what possible options that we have as an elected body to correct some of the situations that are out there. As some of you know, I've written a grant which we got approved for three-star that will allow a small grant, an opportunity to bring the Mottlo technology wagon, you might say, to the jail in order to introduce a GED program, reintroduce a soft skills program, and to do some counseling from that trailer. And so, we've got to put a timeline together on that, and so that will be one way to introduce some programs. Recidivism, as you know, at the jail is greater than the state average, and so, as most of you know, we recycle the same people over and over and over again, and without programs. If we build a jail for another 150 people, it's going to be full, and we'll be building a jail for another 150 people five or 10 years down the road. It's not going to fix the problem at hand. And so, we've got to look at the full scope of what we do as an elected body and as a county commission. And so, I've asked the experts here tonight to educate each and every one of us on what the jail's conditions are now and what an expansion in the jail will do to alleviate the problems that faces Warren County. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Hart and Mr. Bob Bass. If you want to come to the podium, say a little something, and then we'll get started with our presentation. So, if you may have to turn your chairs around, we need to get audiovisual equipment in here and a projector so we can start doing more of these, but until then, we'll have to make do with borrowed equipment. So, if you all want to situate yourselves around or get where you can see.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, county commissioners. Congratulations to all of you, and I hope I can get an escort to the edge of town, because it's your first night, and I come bearing bad news. Your jail's in trouble, and I'm sure most of you are aware of that. You have had a County Correction Partnership working, and they've got a lot accomplished in the last three years. So, part of our presentation tonight is going to be what has been done so far. So, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I am the detention facility manager with Tennessee Corrections Institute. We oversee the certification of the jails and the training of the officers. We testify in court cases for you, and unfortunately, in some jails, depending on the case against you. We work to make sure you achieve the 400-some-odd standards that are necessary to run a local detention lockup. Part of what I do, my specialty, is called a County Corrections Partnership. So, right now, there are 29 counties, and when the mayor makes reference to there are other counties that are in trouble, he's telling you the truth. There are 29 counties going through the same misery and woes that you are. And I liked what he said about if you keep building, because he and I agree on that point, you cannot build your way out of this. You have to have programs. You have to have a place to do programs. You have to have the people willing to come and help you do those type of programs. Part of my job as CCP coordinator is to help you find those people, find other agencies and see what they're doing, people like Rutherford County Workhouse. Find other jails for you to go look at and see how they operate and how they manage their inmate population. So, with that, I'd like to get started. Mr. Jim Hart is going to take over about halfway. He is a jail consultant for CTAS. CTAS was one of the first partners with TCI to see that this gets done. I did a snapshot in '15. If a jail can't meet the standards because of overcrowding, it's allowed to file a plan of action with TCI. Presently, your plan of action says you're going to expand your jail, and was voted on earlier this year. But now, here we are. A bid came back. We need more money, right? Procrastination comes with a price. Kick the can down the road a little feather, it's going to be a little bit bigger price. And then, here you are, first night. Some of you did serve on that committee, and I come in and bring the bad news. Well, it's not all bad news. There's a way to work for this, and I liked what your opening statement said, because you know what? My motto is, "I fix problems. Don't fix blame." It's counterproductive. So, I extracted some of the things out of that snapshot I did so I can let the county commissioners know what kind of shape your jail's in. Now, let me state some facts. A jail averages four years for every year of operation. Some correctional professionals will say three and a half. It depends on what articles you read. And if a jail becomes overcrowded with inmates, it's doing something that it wasn't designed to do, what could happen to it? to do, what could happen to it? Inmates tear it up. Understaffed, overcrowded, and you're going to see some of this in a moment. Two thousand and thirteen is when you entered a plan of action. So Warren County was put on notice. That's five years ago. So I'm not bringing you the first news of this. I presented my program December the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen. It was set up by resolution February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. I conducted a snapshot, three seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, which means I went into pictures of the jail. I looked at the jail population. I did a little mini-study about who was in that jail, what their charges were, why they were sitting in that jail, put that together. I presented it May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. I brought in experts from the Shelby County Department of Corrections of no cost to you, no cost to taxpayers in Warren County. They came down here and stayed three days at their expense to help you fix the lights in that jail, look at doors, look at the maintenance issues, meet with your maintenance man. Now their budget's a little bit different than yours. You have one maintenance man, is he still taking care of all the county buildings?
Yes, he is.
Okay. They have seventy-four, just to take care of their twenty-seven buildings on their campus. That's a busy maintenance man trying to take care of a jail that's overcrowded where inmates have twenty-four hours to sit back there and figure out how they're going to mess things up. It's just a, that's their behavior. I recommended that a study be conducted, an in-depth study, and Mr. Hart did that, August twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. Findings were presented. Upland Design was hired. Mr. Hill's in the room. Conplant, uh, concept plans were developed. Plans were approved by TCI as recent as August the thirteenth. He has an approval letter to do that expansion. We have to approve it, the fire marshals have to approve it. I've conducted numerous trainings that Mr. Scott was there for. He was a pretty good student, asked good questions. Each year, we will inspect this facility. If it doesn't make it, we come back in sixty days. It's unannounced. We don't tell them we're coming. Mandated below. Now the re-inspection, they're told. When I did the snapshot, two hundred and thirty-six inmates, well, you can hope two hundred and fifty-one, but you had areas of the jail that was overcrowded. For instance, jail classification is set up minimum, medium, maximal, and there are subcategories to that. Non-sentenced and sentenced. So in certain areas, you were overcrowded, but the physical plant, the physical plant was deteriorating. Some of the worst I've ever seen. Your total correctional population is one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight in Warren County. That means the ones that are sitting in the jail and the ones that are out on probation. That's what we'd rather do, right? Let's find alternatives. Let's put bracelets on them. Let's put them, ankle monitor. Let's move them out of the jail. You're, you're doing probation. If they bobbed or weaved and you had to bring them back to jail, that's a big jail, thirteen hundred and sixty-eight folks. That number's probably somewhere around the same as it was three years ago. You can go to the Jail Tennessee Summary Report. You can Google it. It's that easy. Type in Tennessee Jail Summary Report. They keep all the statistics that you provide on who's in that jail on the last day of the month. They do it for all the facilities in the state of Tennessee. You can do those comparisons by looking around at neighboring counties. If you'll see in that green, at times you were a hundred and thirty percent the population. Now this is a good time for me to tell you, you have a crowded jail all you want to. It's not unconstitutional, not against law. Just our standards, because we have to have fixed ratios. But it's what happens in that jail when you overcrowd it. Because you put that jaywalker into a cell, that's the axe murderer, is that a pretty good comparison? You see the difference. Probably not a good idea. By the way, you don't know who's in your jail down there? Sure you do. Somebody's brother, sister, mother, father, and your neighbors. It's the people of Warren County. Or transit that committed a crime in Warren County and ended up in that jail. It's your folks. It's your people. And, and I'll tell you what, I'm not into hug-a-thug business, never have been. I'm a former jail administrator, twenty-six years in this business, twenty years with TCI. Let's understand this, jails are not full of bad people. Full of people made bad decisions, right Pastor? And one of the, one of the high-ups is Tommy Vance with Tennessee Department of Corrections. What he said, Tommy, I said, Tommy's here to? Two Tommies, right? This is going back to fifteen and we see a little break there about April of two thousand and fifteen, but it wasn't consistent. In February, you were at a hundred and eighteen percent. Now I know somebody can't see these numbers from up here, and as far as this power point's concerned, we're going to provide it for all the commissioners. We'll get it, we'll get a copy of that for you. And if you don't have a copy of Jim's study that he's about to talk about, and he just took, we want to make this short tonight. We didn't want to make this a two-hour thing. It could be a ten-hour thing, trust me. We'll see that you get PDF files on that. There was a little change here. Look in this center column, it says two sixty-five. It turns out your beds weren't the proper amount and it had to be moved back to two fifty-one. So there was a little change in that. You may have mentioned that a while ago. There it is. That's that revolving door that you're, that's down at your jail. Eighty-nine percent of the folks in there, they're coming back. Why? It starts at home. It starts at home, you're right, Mr. Taylor. But if we, we don't try to look for the cure and offer programs to help those folks, we're not going to change anything. They're just going to keep doing that. The apple doesn't fall far from the tree, you're going to have the whole family down there. One of the things when I did my snapshot is I found out you had an issue with the other inmate. You know who the other inmate is? Who's the other inmate you got down there?
Say it loud, say it loud.
You're dead on, one hundred percent right. Twenty-two percent? Either we're not paying anything, we have no benefit package, or there's something wrong. When I see that kind of, twenty-two percent? Oh, let's see, they work in environment where you meet people that don't care about your problems, people that want to spit on you, people that want to shank you, people that have STDs, people that have AIDS, people that have HIV positive, people that have all kinds of communicable diseases. And they're all yelling, "Do not violate my civil liberties. Don't lay your hands on me." There's several reasons. You're getting overcrowded jail, the work demand, the workload, understaffed. Sometimes it's a good reason. While the sheriff sees someone that's performing well under all this stress and goes, you know, you make a good deputy, I'm going to bring you, you can handle this jail, you can handle the people out on the street, right? I always said if you could be a good deputy, you'd be a great Walmart at the complaint counter, you could handle people. You'd, you'd work out well. I couldn't do it. And in some cases, people are just not adaptive to the work environment. They think they want to do that and they go down there and they find out all the negatives I just mentioned and they want out of it. I've actually had seasoned police officers come to work for me. They lasted one day back in the jail. They're not used to being talked to like that. So I asked the committee to develop a strategy, a team, set it up, let's set up this partnership. Let's do all the things that you outlined in your opening remarks. Let's prioritize, let's see if we can move forward. And you know what? They did. Had me meeting really early in the morning with them. I usually get up early anyway, so six o'clock's okay, but I prefer a little later in the day. Two-fold strategy. Assistant to the jail administrator, this is what they came up with, examine the staffing levels, consider, I said, you need to get Mr. Knowles at the time some help. I said, and they said, and we discussed it, you need to upgrade your maintenance program. Implement technical assistance. Consider really locating files in storage. You've got a room down there that, not everybody agreed with me, but it's, it's as big as this one. I think it can be used for housing, I really do. But it's a storage place right now, just for old files. It's an archive. Look at your correctional practices, examine present classification practices. So that committee did those things. It, it sat down and went to work. It wasn't hearsay. They didn't worry about somebody with a state badge driving up and saying, this is wrong, boys, girls, fix it. They went and, and they immersed themselves in the problem and the solution they came up with was to expand that jail. But now the goalpost has moved, right? Would it be fair for me to come in here tonight with eleven new county commissioners and say, y'all need to move on this? Without knowing the facts? So when Mr. Hart's done, I've got a suggestion I would like to make if the Chair would entertain that. So here's some, here's some ideas. This is kind of what we found in our inspection. This is what got you on us, got on my radar. Look at that picture. Look at the inside of that jail. Look at where they've been tampering, the lights don't work. A lot of these issues have been fixed since. Let's talk about jail design. That's part of what CCP does, is part of what TCI does. Alan can tell you, because we've worked on other projects as well as I have other architect firms, we're, we're pretty tough on them, right Alan? I mean, sometimes he sees you become across the parking lot, he goes, oh, not again, I make them change things. We want this thing, if you're going to build it, do it right. This is what you built back in the day, a holding cell without a window in it. You do know the guy that got on those side of that door wants to kill me, right? So I can't see where he's at because I've got to open the door and go, where is he? Unheard of. That's why it's in that picture. Lot of work's been done. Study's been done. CCP committee made a recommendation. Not my job to decide whether it's the right or wrong recommendation, but here we are. Today, you have three hundred and thirty-one inmates in a two hundred and fifty-one bed jail. It's not getting any better. Some of the issues I saw originally about the electrical and all the fires, that's been done. I'm going to let Mr. Hart take it from here.
Good evening. My name is Jim Hart, I'm with the jail management consulting with County Technical Assistance Service. Just a little background on my, uh, on myself. I spent twenty-two years in the Marine Corps, uh, working in the field of corrections, worked in five different confinement facilities, uh, ran a boot camp program as well as was the director of Marine Corps Corrections at the end of my career. Retired, uh, went to work in Hamilton County and I was a jail administrator or the chief of corrections there for approximately eleven years, uh, prior, prior to coming to work for C-Task. There's two studies that I, I've, uh, been asked to conduct here in Warren County, and I'm just going to briefly touch on the staffing analysis study because it points to some of the comments that Bob has made and some physical plan challenges that you're faced with as it relates to staffing. And then I'll go into the needs assessment, it sort of gives some of the, uh, challenges that your, your actual physical plan is faced with. The staffing analysis that I completed was done in, uh, two, early two thousand and sixteen, late two thousand and fifteen, early two thousand and sixteen. And it's a nine-step process that I want, that you can see up on the screen. But part of the staffing analysis process that I go through, um, it's a model that's been developed through the National Institute of Corrections. And it sort of peels back the onion on everything as it relates to staffing and operations. Uh, in fact, one of the, the last things that we do is, is we build a staff coverage plan or start looking at just exactly how many employees we need. Look at current challenges, look at some goals, we look at operational philosophies, we look at the physical plan, we look at technology, uh, we look at, uh, daily activities that are going on inside facility, we look at the workload that is occurring outside of facility. Three of inmates are going to hospital appointments or medical appointments, movements to courts, uh, movements across the state, putting people, uh, transporting people in the Department of Corrections, picking up people from other county jails to be, bring back for court. So there's a lot of things that we look at before we actually, uh, go into the development of that staff coverage plan. So a couple of things that, that, um, I concluded in that, that, uh, study or, or some observations. Um, first thing was that there's an, uh, extraordinary amount of vandalism that's going on inside that facility. Some of the things I think that, that, some of the problems that you have with that, with the current, with the facility at the time of the study is inmates were locked down on an average of twenty-two hours a day. If you're confined or restricted to a cell for twenty-two hours a day, you're going to find things to do to get creative in your spare time. Most jails, in fact, all jails, uh, with the exception of, um, high-security maximum custody institutions, inmates are out. They're out and about, they're in their dayroom areas, uh, they're recreating, they're working, uh, they're involved in programming opportunities, uh, self-help, self-help opportunities, those type of things. But when you lock them down twenty-two hours a day, they're going to respond with that treatment that they receive. Inmates working in your food service area are routinely left unsupervised. Um, there were, I think that you had one food service employee at that time that only worked certain, uh, certain days and certain hours. After that, it was just a corrections officer that would intermittently go into their food service area to take a look and see if, if the inmates were doing okay in that area. Your supervisors on shifts are routinely standing line officer posts. So when officers are calling in sick or there's, uh, vacancies in the staffing, correctional supervisors are having to fill those, those posts, which now take them out of the supervision role, take them out of the ability to respond and start making decisions for those young corrections officers that are having troubles or encountering situations. Insufficient staffing just is a trend. One of the things that, that I found is the supervision of inmates relied heavily on just sitting in the tower and looking through a window out at the inmate population. When I have a group of inmates behind locked doors, behind windows, and there's no officer roaming around throughout that facility or roaming inside that area, the strongest are going to survive. The strongest people run that show. By having an officer or officer presence roaming around through housing areas, uh, through programming areas, those type of things, it brings control, it brings calm, it brings safety, it brings a sense of security in those housing units, which in my opinion was absent, um, inside those, uh, inside those units. One of the observations in that study was the increase in the average daily populations, uh, that I'll address in the, the needs assessment. Uh, Bob Bass also talked about a, a, uh, high rate of, of turnover in the jail. There is an extremely high rate of turnover. Jail business is not for everybody. Um, I have seen young corrections officers come to work and have lasted thirty minutes before they are walking out the door. It's just not for everybody. And even for a brand-new officer, it takes anywhere from twelve to eighteen months before they develop what I'll refer to as backbone on how to deal with people, how to be, deal with people that are, that are non-compliant, they're agitated, uh, they feel that they're not at fault for what they did, they have serious mental health issues, serious medical issues, they're old, they're young men, women, uh, but it becomes a very difficult challenge to, to get someone into, uh, to, to work and to stay in that line of work. So when we did the staffing analysis amongst the things that we, we took a look at, um, or one of the other things that I noticed- the other things that I noticed before I forget my thought is the shift supervisor, those supervisors that are responsible for the overall shift, the safety and security of the facility, the supervision of the staff, the supervision of inmates, in the absence of the jail administrator or the sheriff, other leadership when they're not there. At the time, there was a pay differential of 10 cents. So a supervisor responsible for the entire security of that facility was making 10 cents an hour more than everybody else. The assistant shift supervisor, who would fill in regularly when the shift supervisor was off, on their normal off days, or were off in training, or there was a vacancy, there was no additional compensation. So it's a huge burden to have an expectation to place on someone that has now had the responsibility to provide the overall supervision of that facility, that physical plant, and the safety and security of those incarcerated in your facility, at an additional 10 cents an hour. So Bob Bass pointed to, in one of his slides, talked about that upward progression, that progression for staff inside the jail is non-existent, in my opinion. So the staffing analysis, I know this slide is difficult to see, but basically it recommended a total of 62 positions. I think you have 32 positions at this point in time. You have 38 positions. Recommended a total of 62. Those positions included corrections officers to provide services for roving, to get inside those housing units, they provided additional positions for transport officers, those officers that are moving people to and from court, moving inmates to different medical appointments in the community, moving inmates across the state to and from county facilities. At the time, you had your own healthcare program. I'm not certain if it's been contracted or not at this point. But at the time, you had your own healthcare program, so the nurses were part of your employee staff in that staffing plan that we gave. One of the things that Bob Bass commented on was the jail administrator was trying to do everything. And as such, the jail administrator was sort of tied to the office, and was not getting out and about the facility, just sort of assessing the environment, the climate, to see what was working, what wasn't working, where were there some challenges as it related to security. So my recommendation was also similar to what Mr. Bass recommended, was an assistant jail administrator or administrative supervisor, someone that could handle some of that, oversee some of that workload, those administrative functions inside the facility, that will free that jail administrator up to supervise, and really run the facility from a perspective of administrative leadership and operational. So I just wanted to quickly touch on the staffing analysis that was conducted early on, because there is some overlap with the new jail planning. So in, I think it was late 2016, I was asked to conduct a needs assessment for the jail, to take a look at your current facility and take a look at some population projections for the future. Certainly overcrowded. Bob Bass referred back to data that he had from 2013. And so I just want to sort of briefly go through the study and then talk to some of the recommendations that I made. Over the period of from 2014 through 2016, when the data that I evaluated, you had an average of 215 males in custody. You had a bed capacity of 175. You had an average of 69 females in custody during that three-year period. The thing about the female population was is that it went from 2014 averaging about 63, up to 2016 averaging 81, and it's higher now. In the state of Tennessee, we've been recognizing an increase of about 1.8% per year of our female population growing since 2010 to present. Bob Bass referred to this 90% classification figure. If you look at your jail, and if you had 100 beds, okay, when your jail exceeds 90%, or the average daily population exceeds that 90%, we start running out of room to effectively classify and house offenders. So what does that mean? He referred to minimum custody, medium custody, maximum custody inmates. So we develop a classification plan, we identify who those people are, and then we want to start housing them based on that classification needs. Certainly someone that is extremely violent, a high-profile offender, we don't want to be living in an open dormitory kind of housing space. We'd rather see them in maybe a one-person or a two-person kind of cell, a more restricted kind of environment where we can enforce more control because of the nature of that person. Certainly when we have those low-risk offenders, they can live in a much more, or less security type of environment, a dormitory kind of housing style, if you will, inside the facility. But as our population starts getting to that 90%, we start losing options on how we can separate those offenders. And what starts happening, and what is happening in your facility, is that we start mixing violent and nonviolent offenders in the same housing areas, in the same cells. We start exposing ourselves to potential liability because of the housing of those violent and nonviolent offenders together. Mr. Bass referred to that having a crowded jail is not unconstitutional, and I agree with that. It's what happens when you have a crowded jail. It's when you're forced to house violent and nonviolent offenders together. It's when you're forced to house inmates with a serious mental health issue, or a serious mental illness, in a booking holding cell, where there's no bunk, it's just a floor, for them to stay in for days on end, because we have no place else to put them, and because, due to geocrowding inside our facility. So it's the operations and the challenges that we become faced with as a jail gets crowded, that creates or expands, or opens up the potential for liability in the operation facility. It's not just the crowding alone. One of the things that I looked at in the assessment was your bookings and releases, and based on the, over a three-year period, you average about 3,200 bookings a year, and based on that, I'm able to give some projections for the future. So when we start talking about the booking area inside your facility, particularly as it relates to any kind of expansion opportunities, as the architect has been working on, I gave some projections of, very minimal, but 15-year projections, about 3,500 per year. So it looks like if everything trends the same, and your community growth is the same, the average numbers stay the same, that there's a potential for an increase of about 300, or increase of about 300 persons a year being booked. My feeling is, is that booking area is sufficient at this point in time. However, Bob Bass showed you that door that had no window on. Not only are violent inmates being housed in there, but there are also housing inmates that are suicidal, inmates that have some serious mental health issues behind that door, so they become out of sight, out of mind in that area. So if you were to continue to use that booking area, which I think would handle the increased workload, I think that we need to get out of the business of housing inmates in that area on a permanent basis, rather using those holding cells from what they're designed for. Short-term, in-processing, out-processing of offenders, two to four hours max, and then removing them either into their population, to wherever they need to be housed at, or they're being released out of custody out of your facilities. Another thing that I looked at is the days in custody at the time of release for offenders. In your county, during this three-year period, 2014 through 2016, 34% of the people that entered your jail were booked and released in less than 24 hours. Okay, so that's a higher, that's a higher volume of turnover of the population coming in your facility. However, I've done quite a few of these studies across the state. The average that I find across the state is about 45% of offenders are booked and released inside, or throughout county jails across the state. So you're quite a bit lower, okay? So what that tells me is that there's an issue with processing of offenders through the system, whether it's the timeliness of the magistrate, which I didn't get a good feel that that was in fact the case, or whether it was delay in getting to court. But there was a definite, there's a definite disparity here in your county as far as moving people through the system in a timely fashion. The second category that I looked at was releasing offenders between one and seven days. And here, 32% of the people that were released from custody during that three-year period were booked and released between one and seven days. That tracks pretty consistently with what I see statewide there. Another piece of data that I tried to gather, but was unsuccessful in gathering here in this needs assessment, is the time in custody from the date arriving in jail to the date completing their court case or disposing of their cases. So why do I want that information? Well, that information starts looking at, is there some flaws, or are there some hiccups, or some delays in the system, that maybe we could look at expediting some processes, or working together to move through, move people through the system in a more expeditious manner to get them sentenced. Or get them sentenced and get them moved on, whether it's into Department of Corrections, or start getting, getting the opportunity to start earning some of those sentence credits to start reducing that population in the facility. That data simply not tracked here. But when we start talking about the county corrections partnership that Mr. Bass and I encourage counties to work with, is that's a piece of information that maybe we could start looking at, that county corrections partnership could look at. And as we see improvements, the county executive mentioned that there's a grant that's coming out to enhance some educational opportunities, some educational programs. So if we were implementing a new program inside our county, or inside our county jail, we can start tracking and monitoring that data to see if something's working. If we see people turning through the facility quicker, if we see a reduction in recidivism rates, we know that it's working. If it's not, we're throwing money away at something we probably need to step back and take a look at it and make some adjustments. Now, you were showed a slide about recidivism rate, and this is one of the areas that Mr. Bass and I do disagree on. If I was to ask each of you in this room to define recidivism, you'd give me a different definition. And I would give a different definition for you, just as Mr. Bass would give you a different definition. Is recidivism rate, are we asking the recidivism rate for DUI offenders? Are we asking recidivism rate for drug offenders? Or is it recidivism rate for domestic violence? Or is it recidivism rate for that program that we had someone go through? Or is it recidivism rate for inmates that are on work release? So you see, there's different definitions, you know, that we don't know unless we start drilling down to exactly what is the question that we want, that we want to answer as far as recidivism rate goes. So while there was a large number there, it can certainly be misleading, because some people can really affect it because of the repeat offenders. But that person that comes in that one time and learned their lesson and never comes back again, okay, is still lumped into that 80% recidivism rate by the definition that was provided up there. Took a look at court filings in criminal chanterate circuit court here. It looks like in criminal courts, 2010 to 2011, there were over 1,900 criminal court filings. By 2015, 16, it dropped down to 1,400. Now, there was an increase in 2011, 12, 12, 13, but it started to come back down again and balanced out for a couple of years. I looked at, in criminal court dispositions, a pretrial judicial diversion, looks like that is routinely used. In fact, it was, it runs between 60 and as high as 90 persons were released on a pretrial or judicial diversion. So it is recognized in the eyes of court that there's some opportunities for some offenders to be in the community, or to be successful in your local community. Bob Bass mentioned some things regarding some opportunities that are existing out there. You had a program here that was part of the rural reentry program out of Franklin County, that's how you got that trailer in the back of the building. For whatever reason, the decision, there was a mixture of reasons, but one of the driving forces were inadequate staffing, and some issues regarding philosophy, that that program stopped. So you had a pretty decent program that's been, that's been successful in quite a field of counties, that was being run out of your facility, that stopped through that rural reentry program there. But it was, it gave people job training, gave people some education awareness, had provided the opportunity to connect people into the community for job placement if they met certain criteria. There's some other examples, it's already been mentioned, Rutherford County Correctional Works Center has a great work release program. The Rutherford County Jail has a work training program that they put a building in, they've got equipment in, all of it was free, all of it granted, they pursued through grant funding. Dyer County in West Tennessee has a jail that's about the same size as your jail, I would believe. They spent $200,000 and opened up the old jail, and have approximately, is it 20? Isn't now, 10 additional females or not?
There are 14 more.
Okay. But they have approximately 20 to 30 inmates that are involved in a work release program. Now, I'm about programs as well, but I'm about the right people being connected to programs. It's not just because there's a program and a person needs to be in there, they need to be the right person, they need to be screened, they need to be evaluated, and connected into these different services and programs. And that is what, one of the things with Dyer County has done, is once an offender is selected for that program, they're now going through ongoing counseling, ongoing job skills training, ongoing life skills training, plus they're working under the supervision of corrections staff and electronic monitoring under several different employers in the community. But the luxury of that kind of, that type of program is, is those offenders are now giving back to the community. In Dyer County, in 2016, they paid back, those 20-plus offenders paid back between $60,000 and $70,000 in court fines and fees. It wouldn't have ever happened unless they had that kind of supervision and were working under supervision in that kind of program there. See, one of the problems that we're finding, not probably here, but across the state, is people are starting to decline. In fact, I've found declined probation because of the restrictions, the amount of fines and fees, and they just sort of get buried, and they can no longer see the light of day. So interviewing quite a few offenders across the state, they'll say that it's much easier for me just to flatten my time in jail, and then when I walk out the door, I don't have those restrictions, I don't have to worry about those fines and fees. There is none. So one of the challenges that I would venture to say that you're facing here, but I'm starting to see over the last six to 12 months, trending across the state. One of the problems, other problems that I found here was the significant number of sentenced misdemeanors in custody. In my opinion, misdemeanors in custody are that low-hanging fruit. That's that people that are in a pretrial status, which your numbers are fairly low and have tracked fairly low, are easy to move through the system. Low bond amounts, low risk, and we can move through the system. The sentenced misdemeanor population, though, you've averaged over that three-year period, you averaged about 40% of your population were sentenced misdemeanors. Statewide average during that same three-year period was 16%. So you're significantly higher in the pretrial misdemeanor, or the sentenced misdemeanor population in your facility. Everything that I looked at, and the persons that I talked to when I was going through that assessment at that time, was is that the sentence computations were being done correctly, that the awarding of either behavior credits or work credits were being done. However, there's very few people that are working in that building. Nobody outside the building, and very few people that are working inside that building during that period of that study. So if work credits were being given, they're being given for people that were performing just miscellaneous functions inside the housing units. But again, that's another area that can be tracked and looked at to address, sort of, if you will, that low-hanging fruit. There's very minimal programming going on inside the building. Main reason is just no space for it, based on the current, on the current physical plan of the facility. And that would be one of the things that in any kind of expansion, that I would certainly encourage, that it be looked at for educational opportunities, for self-help opportunities, for spiritual opportunities inside the population. Another thing that I found is, one of the questions that I'll ask regularly is, and Mr. Bass asked a question, but, "Who's in jail?" And so as we start looking at developing programs or opportunities for offenders, and start looking at moving offenders through the system and back into our community, we ask the question, "Who's in jail? Why are they in jail? How long have they been in jail? What are their needs? Are they military veterans? Do they have mental health issues? Are they homeless? What are their needs? Okay? And how can we link them to services in the community? Jail crowding is not just the sheriff's problem, it's not just the jail administrator's problem, it's a system-wide problem. And I would also lump into that system, it's a community problem, to help look at different options and opportunities for who's in jail. But until we start identifying, and that's one thing I think that might be a consideration, until we have somebody that is identifying who's coming into custody, as a coming into custody, or those people that are staying in custody, to do an assessment, to look at what are the needs for those offenders, then we can start developing or identifying some of the different types of programs and services, not only in the facility... some of the different types of programs and services, not only in the facility, but that we can connect, um, back out into the population. Now, I've said a lot of things here, and I'm, I'm saying that because at the end of the, the study that I did, I started giving some population projections. So you can do some of those things. You can in, uh, incorporate some of those programs. You might invest in an employee that can look at doing assessments and evaluating who's in jail and why are they there. You can look at that employee that is connecting people to services or programs in the jail or outside of jail. You can do all that. You can look at the sentenced misdemeanors and address why that's taking so long. You could take a look at why people are staying in custody. Uh, you only got thirty-two percent of your people that are booking, booked and released in less than twenty-four hours. You can look at all that stuff. Or, Mr. Architect, will you give us more beds? Just build. Just build. Okay? Whatever your average daily population is, one, uh, my experiences and the studies that I've done is, is that when you open a new jail, that you immediately will have a bump of about twenty-seven percent in the jail population. And then it will start going, that it will start going on from there. Um, so at the very end is when I start talking about the projections for new beds, um, instead of at the beginning. Because again, just like the staffing analysis, I believe, and let's peel back the onion and let's look at inefficiencies, let's look at how we can sort of make some, some, um, some management decisions and work together towards addressing some of your system challenges, whether they're internal or external or a mixture of both, and then start, then start talking about, okay, how can we start drilling down what the number of beds or the, the type of beds that you need inside your facility? So what it looks like... Couple of numbers, basic numbers that I give when I start developing a, a population projection. Um, I take your community, uh, your, your average daily population, and I, um, take a look at your community size, um, based on the, uh, the census, and I just do a calculation that gives out a basic, um, a baseline projection. And you can see that top line there shows by two thousand thirty-two, uh, you'd need seventy-four, uh, female beds. But I also take a look at what's called a peaking factor. And a peaking factor is basically if your average daily population is a hundred, but through the month it goes to a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, or maybe at the day of a hundred and five, I'll take a look at the three highest counts over a three-year period, and then I calculate that out to a peaking factor and add that to the population. Uh, the population surge, um, is, again, is about twenty-seven percent for the females based on your average daily population of that twenty-seven percent. Almost nine percent are females, uh, in that population surge there. Classification factor, um, people will use between eighty and ninety percent. That's that, that sort of crowding condition that I talked about. I use a conservative figure of ninety percent, that your jail is crowded when the average daily population exceeds that ninety percent. And then there's a, an area there for mental health and medical. I, I'll refer to these as the special need population. I do not add those numbers to the, to the, uh, bed capacity projections. I just show what it is, what, in my mind, what the needs are. Uh, the National Sheriff's Association, the Treatment Advocacy Center, uh, their last study was done, I think in two thousand fourteen, said that about thirty percent of offenders in jails and prisons in this country have been diagnosed with a serious mental illness. My experience is, though, in, in smaller rural counties such as yours, that it's, it's closer to about ten to fifteen to twenty percent of the population. So for your, I use a real conservative number of this, that, that I think that you need about ten beds for your female inmate population to house those mentally, serious mentally ill, those with some serious medical issues, and those with some suicidal ideations or suicide, or actively suicidal, uh, for female inmates. But you can see there by the year twenty, uh, thirty-two that I recommended a total of ninety-four female beds. Same calculations for your men, except for three hundred and thirty-six beds for your male population. Total four hundred and thirty beds. Now, we took a look, it was in August, I believe, and we took a look at the, uh, met with the architect and, and, uh, Mr. Bass and I, and, uh, looked at the bed projections based on the, the land that you have to expand the facility. And those, those numbers came up a little bit shy of what we had proposed here. Uh, and, and, and they did the best that they could based on what they had to work with as far as the space. And I think we fell shy on the, the special needs beds that I referred to as well, again, just trying to fit everything in on the space and stay, uh, stay within the cost constraints that the county is, is concerned about certainly. Um, so again, I go back to my comments before, this is that we can look at and explore other options, other ideas, okay? And move forward with new jail planning or jail expansion, um, but we have to put something in, in check and something in control. The luxury about the County Corrections Partnership is, is it's, it's an educational kind of process. It's not about finger pointing. Okay? Getting the district attorney to come in and, and explore their challenges. The public defender, the courts to explore their challenges, uh, probation to explore their challenges, just as we've explored the challenges with the jail, is all part of that process so we can understand the different challenges that, that each component of the system is faced with and look at how, look at how we can work together to start addressing those different challenges. Do you need new bed space? Yes, you do. Unfortunately, yes, you do. You need new bed space, particularly with your female population, and particularly as we start talking about separation of offenders. But I think that there's a lot of other things that I've mentioned in this study that, that you can start looking at, start addressing, to start putting that population or that number in check and, and look at some opportunity to start getting offenders back into the community instead of using the jail, using the most expensive component of the system, in my opinion. Is there any questions for me at this point?
I've got one here, Jim.
You sure?
Have you given any consideration to the availability of space that's in the National Guard Armory? As a minimum, uh, as a program satellite facility because it's adjacent to the property?
That, um, was just, that piece of information was given to me in, was it mid-August when we met, Alan? In, in mid-August, I guess, is when that information came to me. It was not available to me when I did this. Um, I had not been inside there, so I had no idea what the facility looks like. I'm in agreement with Mr. Bass, um, on two things, and actually Alan and I chatted a little bit about it, uh, about it before this meeting. You have a room about this size and is full of medical records, uh, or full of records. In my mind, can be converted into dormitory housing space and install some showers and those type of things. Um, it's certainly cheaper to build such as Williamson County did, um, built a, uh, a metal structure out behind the jail for all records and all storage. Certainly cheaper to do that than, than new confinement space. Um, I also think that there, there's some opportunity, and I don't remember dorm sheriff, that when you first walk in, there's some, uh, dormitory space, and then there's like another little offshoot of that. I'm not certain what pod that is. Um, but I think that there's an opportunity there too, to do some reconfiguration in that area, um, and cleaning that area up, uh, to, um, to, uh, to give you some more low-risk, minimum level, um, housing areas. But there's a huge area, there's a huge gap in this facility, a huge mentality that's existed where there's inmate behavior management is walk, watching through a window instead of actively interacting. And there's some, there's some outstanding programs out there that can be brought in to, uh, to help those staff sort of get accustomed to how to deal with inmate behavior in a positive manner, just like a child. Okay? Just like a child. Calm down. Okay? I'll get you in a second. Versus, sign the door in your face. Versus you walk into a housing unit and, and people are just screaming like crazy at you. It's all about be, managing behavior, managing the inmate population, but they have to have the staffing to do it in this facility and, and based on that staffing analysis, they did not have the staffing to do it.
Can you recognize Mr. Baldwin?
A lot of the things that you brought up, we've talked about, I'm on the County Corrections, I served on it for four years, then Scott's, then we two left on that, we told this commission at this point in time. We, we discussed the armor, it was shot down. A lot of the things that you talked about was administrative problems. You know that. We have no control over an elected official for certain things. We talked about this twice with you already and Mr. Bass. Mr. Bass told us, I brought a few notes. He said, uh, fifty-eight percent of our population at that point in time was violating probation. Some of, some of it's been done through, some of this and that they may have, we've heard about, but I don't know. When you have eighty-five percent of your population at one point in time that's all Mr. Mayor's, you can be working. You can have work programs. But it got shot down. We have a brand-new sheriff, and I talked with him today. And I think he's willing to put some programs into motion. We've got to do that. The room he talked about, we sat there and looked at it, measured it off, told him how many prisoners we could put in, and nothing was done because they needed for storage. You couldn't put a little wood divot outside and put them papers in or go upstairs or in uniforms and pile it up and put them in there. We need to spend more money on the jail. We don't necessarily need to do that until we fix some of those problems. We've got three hundred and twenty-two prisoners in there two days. Sixty-six of them are state inmates. State inmates don't count against them. They're still there, but they don't count against us. That's two hundred and fifty-six inmates. That's five inmates over our population. We can also release those sixty-six inmates. We'll lose that thirty-nine dollars a day we're getting, but how many dollars a day does it cost Mr. Keaton?
You've been, you've been in all my classes. I've been trying to be realized.
We, we thought this for three years. I lived the first week when Bob came and the people from Memphisly came. And Bob Bass said this, he said, "You have three major problems." He said, "You've got a, a probation problem, you've got a, um, judge problem, and you've got a discipline problem in the jail." Nothing's changed. You know when our last meeting was for County Corrections? Well, we voted to let Alan draw up some pictures last night, it's we and Ed Wilson. You've got to have administration to work with you, and you've got to have a county executive that's willing to.
Let me add, thank you for making those points. Let me add this, this is where team teaching is. He was talking about that thirty-nine dollars a day, that, that revenue stream. If you didn't have that revenue stream, would you have raised taxes to fund the jail to make it operate? I've been informed it's costing more than thirty-nine dollars a day to keep those prisoners.
And, and you know, that needs to be, and we talked about that. I stopped by the jail today and I talked to the jail, the new jail staff, uh, up command staff, have you done that yet? And they're gonna do that. And you know what? I think you're gonna find out it does. Or let's, 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 let's get rid of the big three-hundred-pound grilling room. They're your inmates, they committed a crime, they're county, they're, they're felons, they're waiting to go to prison. But in August, you asked for three male beds, three female beds, and that's what you got. You got six. Didn't ask, I'm sorry, July, didn't ask for any in August. The staff down there didn't ask, and that was some of the other sheriff now, did not ask. They're not asking to send them. I have that report, sir, I'd be happy to provide them. They're not asking for them. You know why? Because most likely, from July sixteenth to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, your county got seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars put back in your general fund. July seventeenth to June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, you got eight hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars put back in your general fund. That's a grand total of one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. I didn't go back for two years. If you go back five, you're gonna find out that it's getting somewhere around seven fifty, eight hundred thousand a year that you're taking from the state of Tennessee. I assume that was earmarked to fix all the problems in the jail. Or would I be assuming wrong? I would be assuming wrong. Back in general fund, and he got his first for all those other things that need to be done. I know I had a jail, buddy, I kept state inmates. I kept federal inmates.
You're right, but you take more. You're right. You're right. And you're, you're exactly right on the philosophy. I felt that struggle for the three years that I've been counting here. Okay? I felt that struggle, but one other, let's take it one step further. And, and my hat's off to your architect that you have. Um, we sat in a meeting together and as I was looking at it, I was looking at you overbuilding this place as it relates to the level of security. And he said, "We've had discussions on looking at, instead of everything a hundred percent, all two-person cells, maybe some options in certain areas, some four-person or six-person cells. Implementing a good, solid inmate classification system, separate offenders by risk and need can start bringing some of those costs down slightly, expanding a little bit in some of the inmate worker areas, the, the areas that we mentioned." He'd already been tackling all those things and making, and, and coming up with some of those observations, so my hat's off to him, that he was trying to be proactive to look at your best interest. And, and, uh, I, I will tell you that Bob and I have dealt with some that are not like that, and so...
If I could say just one something, you know, I didn't bring y'all here to put you on the hot plate, it was for information. You know, I'm fully committed to criminal justice reform, I've said that for, for many years. I can't sit idling by, now that I'm county executive, and watch a jail spiral out of control at the taxpayers' expense. And economics is called real cost. You save a little, you gotta lose a lot. And so the real cost of not doing something now is gonna be exorbitant. If we have one lawsuit that is connected in some way for our failure to act as an elected body to correct some of the problems that we have faced for multiple years. So I didn't, I didn't bring y'all here to cry wolf. It's a serious challenge, ladies and gentlemen. You know, we've been faced with this situation for several years now. We can't kick the can down the road anymore. We can't continue to do business as usual. We just can't do it. You know, we've heard the recommendations from them, I'm gonna give the opportunity for the sheriff and for Alan to speak here as well. You know, we have put together County Corrections and a safety committee that I feel like are capable of addressing this situation. And so we've had several commissioners that have come to me that ask us, sir, because they want to fix things, particularly some of the newly-elected officials that are passionate about fixing this problem. They see it, they feel it every day. Like you said, it's family, it's friends, it's neighbors, it's kinfolks. You know, I've got several people. The previous sheriff was my first cousin. Believe me, I know what situations that he faced each and every day. And he was a good Christian man, faced with many difficulties and many challenges every day to do what he thought was right. But it oftentimes went unheard. So I've tried to accommodate the interests of some of the board members to serve on safety and corrections, but I've also, you know, pledged and met with multiple people across this county and state to put together a task force that includes our judges, which I've met with, for our DA and prosecutors who I've met with, with our probation people who I've met with, with our court officers who I've met with, with the sheriff and the city police. I've met with all these people. And so together we've got to do this as a people, we owe this to our citizens. It's not fair to continue to do what we're doing. It's not fair to our officers to put them in jeopardy each and every day. It's not fair for somebody's son who got picked up on a marijuana charge or a driving violation charged to sleep in the floor next to a criminal who's committed god knows what kind of crimes. I mean, it's, it's not what we should be doing. So we've got our hands full, you know? We do, we realize that. You know, there's faith, faith initiatives that Tommy Van and others across the community have offered also, help provide counseling on top of these programs. And they've been very successful. You know, some of the governors, uh, candidates have pledged the same kind of thing, that criminal justice has got to begin with the state, but locally we've got to take charge of this situation and do something. We can need to expand the drug court, that's been one of our most successful programs. And yet we failed to do that as well, we've not done the proper funding as well. Looking at probation and sentencing, the county used to be in charge of probation. We have outsourced it out because it was supposed to be a cheaper way of doing it. And it's become a recycling of people, and so we realize that that's not working either. And so I want to appreciate y'all for coming and being candid and bringing some of this that has been shared with others. You know, I want to give, like I said, the opportunity for Mr. Morris to speak, our new elected sheriff, I want to recognize him and the stout that he's brought, and Alan Hill from Upland Design, who has worked diligently over the last few months to come up with a plan. And so there may be additional questions that, you know, this commission has, and I'm gonna suspend the rules for that to allow y'all, so I don't have to recognize that if you've got additional questions, that that can be done. Why? It's important to educate each and every one of you, if we're gonna put together a valid plan that fixes the problem. You know, we can be a part of a problem or we can be part of a fix. And I think the citizens undoubtedly created a mandate for change and for us to not continue to do what we're doing. And I think you wouldn't be sitting there and have gotten, not given me the positive feedback that most of you have done in order to make that happen. Mr. Elton?
Yeah, I didn't know if all we got, y'all guys here, just two questions, I guess. Uh, first question is, you know, we talked about a plan of action, and obviously with the new elected body, uh, how much time do we have before we get another plan of action in place or figure out the jail and what?
January second, because when I come to inspect the jail on January, on January first, that's New Year's Day. So you're, you're certified now. Now, you're gonna have to file monthly a plan, so my recommendation here tonight, and, and So my recommendation here tonight, and let me use this as a segue for that, it won't take but a segue. Reorganize your county correction partnership at like, you're talking, I can hear you up there now. I promise you, Jim and I and the TCI staff will go to work with them to bring them up to speed, to educate them, to show them what the alternatives are. We'll try to have something in a hundred and twenty days. But they gotta commit. They gotta be willing to come to the meetings and work with us. And we'll take them through everything. They'll know more about jails than everyone.
And work regularly together.
And work regularly together. I don't have to be there for them to work.
My second question is, what happens if our jail gets recertified?
Well, I'm glad.
If all of a sudden we don't have this plan of action come in place, what happens to our county? What happens to people?
What it means to not be certified is this. Insurance premiums go up. You're part of the pool, but they still increase. Sometimes we have private carriers. I've seen them quadruple. We will not train in a facility, and we're mandated to do training that's not certified. So we're not gonna come train your officers anywhere, any building you provide in this county. They're gonna have to travel somewhere else, which is more expensive and it's a little problematic logistics. And then the big one is lawsuits. We have our office contacted weekly by attorneys, who's not certified? And to make that clear, there are one hundred and thirty-one, approximately one hundred and thirty-one jail states in Tennessee. Six of them by the end of this year will not be certified. Twenty-nine on the plan of action. That puts ninety-six people out there that don't have this problem. There are ninety-six jails out there that they're not having this issue. They're managing their population. They've been proactive and they've been able to work through it. You're part of the bunch, unfortunately, that's not. If I answer your question now, are you gonna be able to keep those state inmates or presidencies of that? I don't know. I don't work for TCI. I can't answer that. I can't see that why they'd wanna do that. They have demonstrated that in the past. They've come, got them. And he's right. Mr. Carl's right. We don't count them when we do your expansion. You're all crowded with your own people.
The, that storage room, how many more beds is that supposed to add?
I forget the exact number. What we counted is twenty-some odd.
It was, yeah, it was up around the twenties.
And that would have solved our women's problem at the time. At that time, we had eighty-nine women inmates, but I don't think it was in the twenties. That and a few other things could fix us and we gotta have, we really need a courtroom. And I think that's mandatory now, isn't it, Bob?
You can have a jail supervisor report.
You can.
If you have a criminal justice center, it's mandated you have a desired and cible limits. You can have a jail housing county, the court housing, that's being cible limits.
Ms. Brown, you had a question or you had a comment to make?
They were the same two questions as Mr. ...
Y'all can't answer every question tonight. It just shows you the severity of the crisis that we're facing if we don't do something soon. We can't continue to say we're gonna expand and not expand. You know, we've only been certified for the last couple of years because we promised to have a plan of action that included a jail expansion. If that does not happen, then once again, we're back in the same boat as we were before. Sheriff, if you'll come to the podium real quick, I want to recognize Tommy Myers, our new sheriff. And thank you for your commitment to serve. You knew, as well as I did, that it was a big chore and task. You knew by working at the jail what the situations were and how funding and overcrowding and how the inability to address some of those problems by previous administration had contributed to some of the problems that we face and the crisis at hand. And so I ask you to come tonight and bring some of your staff members. If you had anything to say about the situation, what you found thus far and what you feel like is a better plan of action, some of your recommendations, I ask you to do that as well.
First and foremost, can you hear me? First and foremost, ladies and gentlemen, these two guys here are Mr. Bass and Jim. I encourage all of you to listen to him, both of them. They know what they're talking about. Over the last few weeks, I've been in mandatory sheriff school. I've talked to many sheriffs across our great state that encourage all of us new sheriffs that are dealing with the same problem across the state. We have this overcrowding problem. This is a big shift, ladies and gentlemen, that we got to turn around. We can't turn around on a dime. It's gonna take a while. But we all have to work together. You know, I've heard all this tonight. I agree with everything that's been said. I want us to just all work together and try to turn this boat around, but we can't do it overnight. This has just been an ongoing problem for a long time. Probation is an issue. Our jail is overcrowded. It causes all kinds of problems, you know, that I've heard talk about the two-man cell, four-man cells. You know, I want to sit down with everyone and discuss all that. There's reasons behind that. But I just want us to sit at a table and work this out, work together.
We need everybody there that's a player in the criminal justice system in order to come up with the best solution. You know, one committee, the county commission, without having expert information and knowing the severity of the problem and having information from the prosecutors, the court system, probation system, everybody together, will not serve the best interest of our county. And that's one of the things that I'm pledged to do. And so, you know, I've had my own family members incarcerated out at the jail, Jackie's cousins as well. And so we realize that it's a bigger problem than just putting them in and out of jail. You know, there has to be some programs out there. There has to be some counseling, you know. And I don't, I admit that there are some people that deserve to be in jail. There are some people that deserve to be in prison. And so, but for those people who have lost hope, last time I visited and had several students of mine out there, you know, so what am I gonna do when they let me out? I don't have a job. I don't have a driver's license. You know, I owe all these court costs and court fees. I can't support my family. What am I supposed to do? No one's talked to anything out here. There's no programs and stuff to reintroduce me back into the workforce. You know, I didn't finish high school. You know, I quit. So who's gonna hire somebody that's straight out of jail, that's been here multiple times with the multiple same offenses, but has no hope to do anything better? He says, "If you let me out, I'll probably be back again." And so, you know, that's the kind of thing that we have to address. We can, like I said, we can ignore it and pray that it's not one of our family, it's not one of our friends, it's not one of our neighbors. But, you know, the day of reckoning is here. You know, the inmate population far exceeds what it should be for a county this size. You know, and expanding the jail, just like I've talked to Mr. Bass and Mr. Hart, you know, you build three hundred more on there, you'll have three hundred full and another hundred sleeping in the floor before you know it. You know, you know as well as I, there's warrants for people that, you know, you have no place to put them. How do you arrest somebody? Where do you put them after you arrest them? You know, once again, you've got, how many people sleeping in the floor right now?
Many. We had three hundred and twenty-two today total.
But if you had seventy-something, I ain't sleeping in the floor not long ago when I was out there.
True.
And so, you know, some people say that's all they deserve, you know, but if it's overcrowding and it leads to a situation where somebody is killed or hurt, and so another riot, you know, somebody, stab somebody because they weren't protected and had no, I mean, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen and the county can't afford those kind of situations to continue to arise.
My first night after taking office, there was a riot at the jail. You know, welcome you sheriff. I want everyone to know, though, that I am one hundred percent committed to protect and serve. That is my job. But I don't want to, you know, risk public safety to save a dollar. I hope everyone understands that and we can all work together to accomplish that. But that is the sheriff's.
Wait, we could turn everybody loose.
We can't do that.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have any overcrowding.
We cannot do that.
I know we can. Some people said, suggested, let's just turn some of those people loose.
Can't do that.
So we can't. I mean, public safety, you know, is required.
It is. It's my priority.
Would you like to introduce any of your staff?
I would. Bo Rans is my new chief deputy. Most of you know him. Jason Walker is my major, third in charge. Jackie Ratley is my jail administrator.
If I got any questions, Mr. Myers?
I don't have a question for Sheriff Myers. I do appreciate you being upfront with us, Tommy, about what's going on. One thing I just want to ask going forward, and I probably won't be on this committee, obviously, is that we try not to have meetings, as in the past, at seven o'clock on Friday morning with normal people like me that have a job. I can't be there. And then when we have reports and county court, we have no news to report. And so, you know, we don't have any data.
That's addressed in some of my memorandums that are on your desk right now.
I appreciate that. That will help a whole lot.
Mr. Hill, would you like to approach the podium and give some input, where we stand right now? From your perspective, from Upland Design, you've been working many months on this.
Yes, sir. First, I would like to address Mr. Baldwin's comment about courtroom. We did have a preliminary design that did include expansion of courtroom. We did look at that feasibility. It was not included in the bid package because we felt like it was over budget. But we did look at some feasibility for that and we'll be happy to look at that in more detail if so requested. As you may know, the bids that were received for the project are now void because of the time. Contractor was obligated to hold their bid good for a certain time and that time has passed. The contractor has told us that they may possibly be able to honor that bid, that they cannot guarantee that they would. I would expect that before much time, they would not be able to do, to honor it at all because of material price increases and things like that. We will be happy to assist if the county would like to rebid the project or would like to modify the design, we'll be happy to accommodate and work with you to accomplish that.
Without a clear plan, however, to fix the problems we've got right now, which you've said there are some critical things that need addressing in the current jail, did you not in our conversation with you? Things that need to be fixed, things before we build, and there are some things that need to be addressed as part of this addition because it's not gonna fix the situation, particularly maintenance and some of the other things at the jail that we have right now?
For example, included in the bid for the whole project was redoing the camera system in the existing jail. That's something that is quite needed, as jail staff will attest to. So there is a vandalism problem. As TCI mentioned, there's a vandalism problem in the existing building. We have tried to address some of that and do some more robust design in our design for the new addition. But nowhere in this program included retrofitting lighting, for example, back in the existing jail. So there are some capital maintenance needs in existing jails that have not been addressed in the project that was built.
And the six and a half million dollars that we were gonna borrow, as most of you know, once again, we're only gonna pay interest on it, not principal payments. And so now the bid is coming much higher, but it's still not, the original bid did not include an increase in staffing, which will be required, or the equipment that's needed in the new addition. And so that's gonna be additional costs or whatever that's gonna have to be faced by this commission at some point if we do that expansion. They cannot continue, the sheriff will tell you himself, they cannot continue to operate in the same number of staff members that they've got right now. It's impossible to expand the jail of that size and not address it. Without proper equipment and beds and all the other things that go along with operating a facility, just building a building is not getting the job done.
But we will be happy to work with you for a long-term plan or to rebid this project. We would just ask for some direction as to how the county would like for us to proceed.
Our committees will have to be up and functioning in order to help make some of this happen and move forward. Otherwise, it can be another one or two months before we actually address this situation. Yes, Mr. Elton?
Do you have any plans or, I know that the old sheriff, he wanted two-man cells. Is there anything that you can think of just right out the gate that could take some cost out of this to get it in our budget?
There are some things that we could do to reduce the cost somewhat. But we felt like that we wanted to, we were concerned about long-term value for the county. There are some things that are big-ticket items that have to be done, whether we add ten beds or whether we add two hundred beds. For example, there's some modifications to the smoke evacuation system in the existing housing areas that need to be done. That's a fixed cost. It costs so much to do that, however much we add. So we felt like the project we put together was the most bang for the buck for the county. Yes, changing some of the, changing the cells from two-person cells to four-person cells would have some cost savings. It would not have reduced it down to the six and a half million dollar number, but it would have had some cost savings.
Can you throw a number at what that cost savings would be?
No, not really. I could make some guesses, but they would be guesses.
And the current jail has a situation that we do, because in order to save a little, we had to lose a lot. And so we cut costs and now we're paying the cost of being cheap when the first jail was built. It was not adequate from the very beginning. And as the sheriff has told me multiple times, the previous sheriff, you know, had we built this jail right to begin with, we wouldn't be facing some of the maintenance problems, the situation and costs that we do today. We don't need to do that on another jail expansion and end up ten or fifteen years down the road with a similar situation that leads to so much expense that there's no way to fund that. Any commissioner's got any questions? Mr. Bass, Mr. Hart, Mr. Hill, our new sheriff?
I'd like to make a statement. Just in summary, I would like to say that, you know, this new commission, we're excited, you know, about working with Tommy and his new administration. We're excited to be working together in this new commission to address a lot of these issues that we're facing with the jail. My background, for those of you, for those of you that do not know me, is in mental health and substance abuse. I'm passionate about this field. There's lots of things that we can do differently. But we're only gonna get them done by working together with one another. And I know we're running short on time here, but looking at probation services, how they've been effective, how we can change those. Behavior modification. Mr. Bass and Mr. Hart talked about that specifically and people not interacting with the inmates. And so I want to make a comment about that. That's a positive thing we can look at. And integrating substance use programs into our jail, work programs, faith-based initiatives like Executive Haley mentioned in reference to Mr. Van. But in summary, I just want to say that we appreciate you coming and speaking to us and we appreciate the new sheriff administration. We're looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stotis. Anyone else? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to have a ten-minute recess?
I was gonna ask that before you started our new business, if there's no.
I hope that we do that.
So we have a motion.
Second.
Recession in a second. So we recess in ten minutes, give everyone a break. To also add, there is a debt summary. I met with Scott Gibson, who's our financial management consultant this week, along with our finance director, Justin Cotton, for about a two-and-a-half-hour conversation about future budgeting needs and outstanding debt. And there's some projections, along with some more projections, we can provide for you as well in order to get a better grasp of the budget. And so that will be, this is shared with you here. And at our next commission meeting, I want to do another information meeting on budget and have some of the experts here and a detailed report from Mr. Cotton will be able to answer questions about the budget. So until we get a grip on the budget, you know, most of these things that we're talking about tonight, we can't finance. And so we've got to get a little bit better understanding, the commission does, about where we stand, how many Lincoln roofs that we've got and how many things that need to be addressed by this commission in this first year of operation as a new elected body. As Slim advised me, we gotta believe in ourselves and so move forward. So we're getting ready to take on old and new business and so as any old business need to come before the commission tonight as we reconvene. Before we start new business, I want to say a little something as well. You know, we've heard a lot here tonight and I shared an opening statement with you. And tonight or whatever, you can either reject or approve me as chair. I think the citizens chose me to lead this county, embrace my vision. This is what the voters wanted. And rejecting me is kind of rejecting that mandate. I think most of you realize I'm here to serve and I work hard. And the challenges that are ahead, I'm willing to face them. Been in my office till eleven, twelve o'clock many nights in the last two weeks, trying to get a grasp of what we have done for this county and what we need to do as an elected body. You can either reject or approve my committees. You know, it's all or nothing. We can start over. You can reject them, give your own recommendations. You know, we can dysfunction government for another month or two and delay it. But you see, what we have at hand is a challenge. And we've been elected to serve. We can't continue to operate as we've been operating. And I think the handouts and some of the things on committees and looking at what we do as an elected body needs to be addressed. I gave careful consideration for these committees, especially to build new leadership. We've got new folks on this commission, you know, an opportunity to refresh and redirect what we have done and what our strategies are gonna be. We can't please- We can't please everyone, just can't, you know, and that will never happen. If I start taking people off one committee, then what happens to those people I assigned that were very excited about being able to serve and being passionate about being in charge of something that they feel like they can make a difference? So, you know, I asked you to approve my list and approve me as, as chair, you know, you can reject, come back with your own strategy if you want to, but as a team, we have to work together. You know, there's plenty of opportunities in your package, I've given you some, to serve. You know, we've got, as you see, we have a bunch of standing committees, nine standing committees, one state mandated committee, and 27 other committees and boards where you can serve our citizenry and bring talents and what you have as an elected commission to help meet our community's needs. It's about our citizens, it's not about personal agendas, as I said before. And so, the task forces that I'm going to be put together, it'll be those people who play as a team, those people that want to help solve some of our issues and problems. That's what our citizens voted for, that's the change that is necessary, and that's the order of business that we would like to conduct. And so those handouts that I've given you about committees, that's an important part of what we've got to do, we're countless hours on trying to put that together, just like Mr. Wiltshire said, at a reasonable time, regularly scheduled. Our committees do not have any descriptions on what they do, I've had multiple new commissioners say, what does this committee do? I've searched and searched, there is no description of what committees do, what they're empowered to do, how many people serve on committees, how long they basically serve, you know, there's lots of things. I can change committees as chair and recommend, if one's not working, it's not working, we change it. You know, there's nothing set in stone that somebody has to sit on a committee for four years. There's not. Financial management changes every year, I've listed also a group of possible candidates for financial management, they do not have to come from commission. You've got a copy of the 81 Act, the Tennessee Code Annotating, you know, financial experts can be invited to sit on financial management, why? They're the experts. They are. And so my recommendation on financial management is also in your package as well, that's how we will address business, that's what we'll face the problems and find a solution, rather than pointing a finger or whatever and make accusations that I play favorites with someone or that someone has influenced me to put them on there. No one influenced me, no one asked me to say, you've got to put this person on there. No one said, well, if you do this, I've got it, that's not how I approached it, you know, and it's an insult to me, you know, as a newly elected person that won by 55% by the electorate, to be challenged that I'm playing petty politics and I'm doing something to discredit someone or humiliate someone, that's not how I do business, those of you who know me, it's not. It's just not. And so, you know, let's spend some time fixing things instead of spending time spinning wheels, digging a hole that we can't climb out of. And so, it is the choice of this commission, you know, some of my powers is limited because it's checks and balances. Anything committees do can be rejected by the full commission, committees only recommend, but they are tasked with doing the major part of this commission unless all 24 of you want to do a committee of whole and address every issue that we have as a county and need countless hours to get that done. Committees recommend. And so, by educating you and bringing people in here, all committees then have the same information, all commissioners have the same information, and it's not one person or two people or three people that have sat on commissions for years doing the same things over and over and over again. You know, if we do that, we end up with the same results, and we do not need the same results as an elected body and as a county commission. So, with that being said, you've got your order of business in front of you, next item of business is new business. Item number one is to elect a chairman of the Warren County Commission, is a recommendation, Chair recognizes Tommy Savage.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate for chairman of the Warren County Commission, County Executive Jimmy Haley.
Is there a second?
Second, second of the motion.
A second from Ms. Carleen Brown. Anybody want to speak to that motion? Anybody want to amend that motion? Then all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two is appointment of standing committees. Is there a motion to accept the proposed standing committees? We have a motion from Ms. Ross, is there a second? We have a second from Ms. Evans, anybody want to speak to that motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Judkins?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Passe.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote? Three no, two yes.
Twenty-one yes, three no, thank you. Item number three is approval of bonds for elected officials, I think you have those bonds in front of you, is there a motion to approve all those bonds that are in your package tonight? A motion from Mr. Bolden, we have a second from Mr. Stotts, anybody want to speak to the motion? Then all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we have a, have a roll call because it involves money.
We do, it does involve money, thank you sir for correcting me. So let's call for the vote then.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Judkins?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote? Twenty-four yes.
I keep 24 votes, yes, the motion carries. Item four is financial management, appoint four members of financial management committee. You'll notice in your packet and what's on your desk today is an explanation about financial management. I've made my recommendation on four members to our members of this commission, which would be Tommy Savage and then Chairman of Finance, which would be Richard Grissom, plus two financial experts from the community, Peter Van Buren, who's CEO and Chief Financial Officer of First National Bank, and Brent McKay from McKay Advisory Investments here in McMinnville. And so, Ms. Scott, if you would read the conditions on voting for financial management?
Inform commission of persons who have offered to serve on this committee, inform commission that appointments will be for one-year terms to expire in September 2019, with reappointments to be made annually thereafter, accept nominations from county commissioners, obtain second for each nomination, commissioners may at separate times nominate more than one person, commissioners nominating, nominating a person not present must confirm that the person is willing to serve, review qualifications of members, receive a minimum of four nominations, accept all nominations unlimited after which a motion to cease nominations may be accepted, inform any commissioners nominated that they may vote for themselves, confirm that any persons present and nominated are willing to serve, inform commissioners that each commissioner gets four yes votes with remainder votes to be nay or pass, organize names of nominees in alphabetical order prior to voting, roll call votes alternating top to bottom, bottom to top, four nominees receiving the top numbers of votes will be appointed to the committee and in case of a tie, the logical solution will be determined.
As you've seen my list of possible candidates for financial management, are there any other nominations for financial management?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, recognize, who said that?
Me.
Oh, Mr. Wiltshire?
I would like to nominate Scott Ruble.
Scott Ruble. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second for Mr. Hilton, any other names to come before?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recommend Blaine Wiltshire.
Motion, we have a second for Mr. Bell, any other nominations from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Gary Martin.
Nomination from Gary Martin.
I have a second, ma'am.
We have a second from Mr. Spartman.
Mr. Chairman?
Any new nominations or cease?
I'd also like to nominate Tommy Savage.
Tommy Savage is on my list, someone needs to nominate my list as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to nominate your list, please.
Who?
Mr. Van Buren?
Peter Van Buren?
Yes.
Is there a second? We have a second for Mr. Owens? You got any nominations?
A second.
From that list I gave you or from another list?
Mr. Chairman, if my, if I may ask, in the past, we've had stipulations and restrictions about anybody serving on the financial management committee could not have an immediate part of the family as working for the Board of Education, now does that still go?
For what appointees are we talking about?
Of the financial management.
Of which individual person are we talking?
With any, any, any members besides you and Libby Glenn and Bobby Cox, any other county court member serving on that could not have an immediate member of their family working for the school system. That's been since 2011, that was put in writing, that was one of the restrictions, stipulations that we put in there. I'm just wondering, are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am, and those candidates meet those criteria?
They all do.
Pretty sure.
Mr. Chairman?
No, I don't, I just wanted to, it wasn't mentioned, I just wanted it to be brought up, made aware of.
I do not, I, according to the way it's wrote here, I do not, I'm not eligible to serve, and that's what I spoke with you about today, confirmed with Charles Curtis that state law overrides this, and then we were going to try to do in, in the future a resolution to take that out, the in-laws clause is what I'm talking about. If that is a conflict, then I will remove myself, but according to Charles Curtis, today it's not.
That's my understanding as well, it might come back and be challenged, but that's my understanding. Any other nominations from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it necessary for us to nominate all the individual members that you have recommended?
If you want them on this slate to be considered, yes.
Okay, if that's the case, I wish to nominate Richard Grissom.
We have a motion for Richard Grissom, Mr. Chairman, we have a second for Mr. Dunlap. Any other? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that nomination ceases.
A motion for Mr. Ruble, is there a second? We have a second for Mr. Wiltshire. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
So, if you list our candidates found, Ms. Scott, we'll do a roll call vote, as you realize you can only vote for four candidates, and so it's either approve or reject, you have four votes, so we have more than four candidates on this list.
Ms. Chairman, did, make sure I'm correct here, that Mr. Brent McKay, he did not make the list correct?
No, we nominated him.
I'm trying to put my alphabet right, I'm sorry.
Yes, I know, it may take a minute to be alphabetized. We take each candidate one at a time. So if you vote yes one time, it takes up one of your votes, so keep your own personal tallies because Ms. Scott will tell you if you've overvoted or undervoted, a pass, or no vote.
Just leave an individual name for that?
The first person on the list is?
Richard Grissom.
Richard Grissom. So Richard Grissom is the candidate being voted on, is an appointee, financial management.
Could you read the entire list, please?
Yes.
Richard Grissom, Gary Martin, Scott Ruble, Tommy Savage, Peter Van Buren, and Blaine Wiltshire.
Any other questions? We'll start with Richard Grissom, so we'll have to do a roll call vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Passe.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Judkins?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Passe.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Passe.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one want to change their vote? Twenty-four yes.
I keep 24 votes, yes, the motion carries. Item four is financial management, appoint four members of financial management committee. You'll notice in your packet and what's on your desk today is an explanation about financial management. I've made my recommendation on four members to our members of this commission, which would be Tommy Savage and then Chairman of Finance, which would be Richard Grissom, plus two financial experts from the community, Peter Van Buren, who's CEO and Chief Financial Officer of First National Bank, and Brent McKay from McKay Advisory Investments here in McMinnville. And so, Ms. Scott, if you would read the conditions on voting for financial management?
Inform commission of persons who have offered to serve on this committee, inform commission that appointments will be for one-year terms to expire in September 2019, with reappointments to be made annually thereafter, accept nominations from county commissioners, obtain second for each nomination, commissioners may at separate times nominate more than one person, commissioners nominating, nominating a person not present must confirm that the person is willing to serve, review qualifications of members, receive a minimum of four nominations, accept all nominations unlimited after which a motion to cease nominations may be accepted, inform any commissioners nominated that they may vote for themselves, confirm that any persons present and nominated are willing to serve, inform commissioners that each commissioner gets four yes votes with remainder votes to be nay or pass, organize names of nominees in alphabetical order prior to voting, roll call votes alternating top to bottom, bottom to top, four nominees receiving the top numbers of votes will be appointed to the committee and in case of a tie, the logical solution will be determined.
As you've seen my list of possible candidates for financial management, are there any other nominations for financial management?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, recognize, who said that?
Me.
Oh, Mr. Wiltshire?
I would like to nominate Scott Ruble.
Scott Ruble. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second for Mr. Hilton, any other names to come before?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recommend Blaine Wiltshire.
Motion, we have a second for Mr. Bell, any other nominations from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to nominate Gary Martin. Nomination from Gary Martin?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
She's recounting.
Mr. Chairman?
Twelve yeses.
I think we need to recount. I think we had, I had thirteen. I don't know.
I had eleven.
Can I ask a question? Just to clarify, can, you can't vote for yourself?
You can vote for yourself, yes. You can. The pass makes you, it's, you've, yeah, you've not used your yes vote.
Do you want me to do a recount?
If you do a recount, if that's...
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
No.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Lori, Lori Jenkins?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Pass.
Stephen Hilton?
Pass.
Richard Grissom?
Pass.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
No.
Randy England?
Pass.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Next candidate?
Scott Ruble.
Scott Ruble. Start from the top, I don't understand.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
No.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Jenkins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Pass.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone wanna change your vote? Twenty-two yeses.
Twenty-two yeses. Next candidate, remember you can only vote four times.
We for Tommy Savage.
Tommy Savage.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Pass.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Tyrone Spartman?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble? Christie Ross?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Lori Jenkins?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Michael Bell?
Pass.
Twenty yeses. Next candidate?
Peter Van Beuren, is that saying anything?
Yeah.
Michael Bell?
No.
Carl D. Bolden?
No.
Carl E. Bolden?
No.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Randy England?
No.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Pass.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Jenkins?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
No.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Pass.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Tyrone Spartman?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Pass.
Cole Taylor?
Pass.
Blaine Wiltshire?
I'm out.
He just can't vote. He says he's used his four votes.
Easy, okay. Okay.
Somebody have used their four votes.
It's too hard to keep up with. Y'all know what you did and what you didn't.
Can you give me a tally? How many votes each individual commissioner has?
Yeses.
Yeah, yeses. Several of you may be out of yeses. It's maybe passed that made that vote. Please hold figured out.
Give me just a minute, I'm sorry.
Eddie's checking as well. May I have a re- go, figure it out? Collaborating, I think at least one, if not two, people have used too many yes votes. Get four yes votes. If four nominees, it wouldn't have been this hard. What's your report, Scott? Lots of fun can be fun when you know how it's done. What about it, Mr. Wiltshire?
Hang it in there, I'm tapped out. I'm out.
Satisfied. Well, this guy's been being challenged on Peters. It's already voted four times. That would be, they voted five. We got another candidate. Some people are out of votes. All right, Scott, keep up with your votes. Ms. Scott, what's the, uh, what's the verdict on this?
Want me to tell who's got one vote left?
Someone already voted twi- voted too many times?
Yes.
So who was that?
I'll tell you the people that's already, that has four.
All right.
Carl E. Bolden already has four votes. Steve Glenn has four. Robert Hennessy has four. Lori Jenkins has four. Ron Lee is four. Gary Prater's four. Tommy Savage is four. Cole Taylor's four, and Blaine Wiltshire is four. And that's before we voted on Peter Van Be- Beuren.
So, somebody voted an extra time for Peters, so we're gonna have to call for that vote. Again, and we still have one more candidate, we still have Blaine Wiltshire to vote for as well, so... So we'll call for the vote on Peter Van Beuren again.
You've got three. You have one left.
I think, unless you said you're at four votes, you have one vote left. I said somebody voted an extra time on Peter. So we'll call for the vote, roll call vote on Peter Van Beuren again.
Michael Bell?
No.
Carl D. Bolden?
No.
Carl E. Bolden?
No.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Randy England?
No.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
No.
Robert Hennessy?
Out.
I still have to call your names, sorry. Lori Jenkins?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
No.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater? Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Tommy Savage?
No.
Tyrone Spartman?
No.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Pass.
Cole Taylor? Blaine Wiltshire?
We have one more candidate. We'll have to call the roll call vote.
Steve voted in. Yes, he did.
What now? I ask if anybody wishes to change their vote, 'cause he's got...
See, one more change of vote.
Yes, I need to change my vote. I'm out.
Six yeses. We have a final candidate, Mr. Blaine Wiltshire, so call for the roll. Six.
Six, okay.
Some of you are out, remember, so once again, I ask all to keep up with your votes. Only two, three, four.
Blaine Wiltshire?
No.
Cole, Cole Taylor, no. I'll just say it for you.
I'm out.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
No.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Pass.
Gary Prater?
Pass.
Daniel Owens? Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Pass.
Lori Jenkins?
Out.
Robert Hennessy?
Out.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
I'm out of votes.
Steve Glenn, don't say it.
I'm out.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
I'm out.
Carl E. Bolden's out.
I'm out.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
We have, to my counting, and Ms. Scott can verify, these were the top four candidates. So we have Scott Ruble with twenty-two, Richard Grissom with twenty-one, Tommy Savage with twenty, and Gary Martin with twelve. So we have four members of financial management. A couple more items of business as we move forward. Item number five is appoint one member to the 911 board. Our recommendation is to the Chair of Safety, Ron Lee. Is there a motion to that effect?
I like that motion.
There's a motion from Richard Grissom and a second from Carl E. Bolden. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number six is approval of notaries. You have the list of notaries within your packet.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from who? Who said the first motion? Stephen Hilton? Scott Ruble?
I'll second it.
From Stephen Hilton? Any further discussion, might we speak to the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Got a few announcements and stuff to make. One of the announcements is, legal has recommended that we adopt Robert Rules of Order at our next session. Also, coming out of the county association meeting we had last week, uh, we do not have any rules and procedures for the operation of this commission. And so Charlie Curtis suggested that I create a committee of the whole, and then we put, start looking toward putting a policy and procedures together for the operation of this county commission. The vote, this last thing ought to show you, it's, it's sometimes a little hard, sometimes to wade through, on what are procedures. And so Charlie Curtis said he would come and moderate this, and so that means every commissioner will have input. We've got a set of old rules and procedures that were adopted, not adopted, uh, about sixteen, fifteen years ago by the county commission that we could look at again, or we can start from scratch and look at what others have looked at as well, or have adopted. But Charlie Curtis is there as the expert to guide us through that. And so, as Executive Director of the Tennessee County Commission Association, and I think he knows what he's doing and will help lead us through that. We've got a couple of committees that need to, uh, to have sessions set. Several of you have asked for a couple of your members to, now that we've got committees, to put some times together. I know, uh, education is chosen the first Monday of each month at 5:00 PM in the Magnolia Room. Some of your meetings will depend upon the use of rooms in this building, and so we'll have to work around that. The conference room is always available. We have to, we can meet in the courtroom, we'll have to, on the committee of the whole, and we're talking about putting policies and procedures in operating. The conference room is always available. We have to, we can meet in the courtroom, we'll have to, in the committee of the whole, and we're talking about putting policies and procedures and operating into guidance into place. Policy and personnel, Mr. Savage has asked for one to be September twentieth at 6:00 PM in the conference room. Like I said, there's additional committee assignments that have to be done in your packet, and so some of those will come from these committees. Policy and personnel, the financial management as well. So, if your committee is tasked with that, some of these are recommendations of mine to the committee, and some of them, 911 comes from the county executive, so that's in your package to review. Could have done that tonight, but there's too many appointments to be made, and we've got to move on. We can do that at our next session. But we had to do 911 so we can have a meeting. I said on that board as well. So, that's something else. Your contact information sheets that were in your packet, we need those ASAP. We're looking at building a website as well that will include personal emails for every county commission. Some of you have asked for electronic dockets to be sent out to you, and so we're gonna work toward that, so we've already looked at how to expand the number of email addresses. Several of the new elected officials want the same thing for their members as well. And so, Tommy Savage wanted me to read a letter also. Said, "Just wanted to say thanks for the visits, calls, messages, and prayers from the county commission, the county executive, county employees during the passing of my brother." Thank you so much. This is from Tommy and Carla Savage. Also, those of you that have not had your picture made, we gotta get pictures made for you and for the website, and to get those updated information sheets, information on the website as well. Melanie is here. She's sat through a long meeting. Most of you have not filled out, or a lot of you have not filled out, the personnel, my employee papers, so she's got to get you to sign off on that before you leave tonight. Just over in here, right, we got a new finance director here, Justin Cotton, and so he'll be doing some reports at our next meeting. And also, to introduce you to my executive assistant, Matthew Hibden, who's sitting behind me. His resume, job description is in your, on your desk tonight, so you can review that. He's the go-to person in my office. And so, I can't be everywhere, so I have empowered him to go to committee meetings, or to Nashville. He'll be going to something at Motlow for me, because I can only be so many places at once, and I promise, I'm gonna be engaged in what our community does in state and national meetings that are important to the operation of this governing body. I will be attending, as I did as mayor of the city of McMinnville. And so, once again, you know, we're moving forward. Thank y'all for a good meeting for tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Email sheets for the county is in that packet, so please get that filled out. So, you'll see that as the last stack in your, on your packet desk.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I recognize Mr. Lee.
Let's not, let's not all get out of here tonight before we recognize Mr. Thirty-nine-year-old birthday boy.
Okay.
Happy birthday, Mr. Carl Moe. Happy birthday.
So... We're trying our best, you know, that's it. All of you sit up, Matthew says, all you have to do is log in and do your passwords. So...
I hope everybody can do that, because it's a real easy way to remember your email.
It is. Any further business to come before the commission tonight? Thank y'all for a good meeting. Is there a motion to the chair?
A motion to Mr. Prater and a second to Mr. Bell. Enough of the business, we scan the chart.